Good evening. Welcome, everyone. I, Councilmember Hunt, call the October 6, 2022 City Council Planning, Development, and Environment Committee to order. I am Victoria Hunt, and I'm here today with Council President Walsh and Councilmember Ray. There will be multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There will be a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation in council question and answer period on tonight's agenda items, and there are two agenda items this evening. So we will start now with public comment, and members of the public may address council at this time in person or virtually. Those who are signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, press star three, and if you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for the hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. And if you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing the public comment portion of the meeting. So I will wait for a moment to see if anyone would like to address the council this time. Okay? And then I will read some additional guidelines. Please direct comments to the whole council, not individuals. While this is not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, please unmute your microphone or step up to the lectern. Please state your name, address, relationship to the city. Please speak clearly and pause frequently, and please limit your comments to five minutes. And if you're attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed, and you are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if you are able. All right. So clerk, could you please identify the first person who signed up to speak?
Chair Hunt, Connie Marsh would like to address the committee.
Great. Thank you.
My name's Connie Marsh, and my first comment is format. When we went to these committee meetings, the idea was that it was going to be able to create more of a dialogue, and I have not seen the dialogue be achieved in these subcommittee meetings that we used to have. And part of that, I think, is that you're sitting up in the chairs, and so you each speak one at a time, and you don't have as much of a conversation. You speak sort of past each other instead of between each other. And I would, I don't, I don't think that that makes a functional subcommittee, having watched these for many years. I did ask if the old way of sitting down where you could be more conversational was a possibility, and I was told no, that the moving around of the room was not what they wanted to do. So I am here to request that that happen anyway, even if it is harder, because I think it's better. And then I was listening to the opening statement, and another thing that occurred in the old form of having subcommittees is council members actually did answer questions if they knew the answers to them, or they had staff answer questions at the subcommittee meeting level because it was supposed to be more back and forth between the community, too. And so that is, that is exactly what you said would not be. And so I would like that reconsidered, too, because if you actually want to have a dialogue with the community, at some point in time, you have to give a chance to actually answer each other, because at this point, it's set up so that you can't, unless somehow you meet on the street corner. And you don't want me standing on your street corner waiting to pounce, I'm here to tell you. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. City Clerk, has anyone else signed up to speak on the public comment?
Nobody else has signed up to speak, Chair Hunt, and we have no virtual attendees.
Okay. Thank you very much. So then I will move to the next item on our agenda, which is approval of the minutes. These are the minutes from our September 22 meeting. I did not have any corrections. Do we have any corrections or comments? Okay. Then I move to approve the minutes of the September 22 meeting as they appear in our agenda. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. And then, secondly, due to staff availability, I'm going to propose that we switch the order of the two agenda items so that the item that appears as Item B, which is the Title 18 Process and Procedures, ID 1276, actually comes first, and then we will move to ID 1092, which is the Contractor Code of Conduct. So would there be any objections to doing that due to staff availability? Okay. There being no objections, we will proceed with the items in that order. And then we will start with ID 1276, Title 18 Process and Procedures, presented by Director Dollywell.
Good evening, councilmembers and members of the community. So I'm going to quickly share my screen here and start the presentation. So tonight, we're talking about the last of the six buckets, Process and Procedures, in the Title 18 Land Use Code update, and we're seeking this committee's input on if there are any additional considerations for the Planning Policy Commission to study before they finalize their recommendation to City Council, and if the proposed changes meet the goals and outcomes intended for this topic, or if there are any additional topics we should, you know, consider when making final edits to the consolidated draft. Title 18 Procedures and Administration topic had these six, five goals, four goals: protect forested hillsides, increase public awareness, effective management of travel, and modernize the code and incorporate best practices. So at the last meeting, we covered the first five subtopics, and today, we're covering the last one, Process and Procedures, and, and we'll divide it into two further subtopics. First off is vesting, and we have our city attorney here today. If council committee members have any questions for her, Anne Marie is on the line. So we'll get into the first topic. So in Washington, the vested rights doctrine provides certain land use permits be considered under the zoning and land use control ordinance in effect at the time a complete application has been submitted. It's, the, this doctrine is statutorily based on the context of a building permit, subdivision, short subdivision, or, you know, more than nine lots is considered a subdivision in most cities, and development agreement. So those are the three statutes that apply for vesting. The cities may, however, authorize in other situations if we put that in our specific code or a policy. So what are we authorized to change to meet local needs and circumstances? We can decide what items are needed for a complete application. We can have that in our code, what is deemed complete. The city can decide if there are other land use applications in addition to the subdivision, short plat, or building permits that will allow vesting, such as site development permit and, and other applications like that. The city may impose an explicit expiration date that's tied to the expiration of the permit for other project, for other applications than those three listed in the state law. If a new regulation is adopted because a change in conditions can result in serious threat to public health and safety, the city is authorized to impose the new regulation even on a previously vested application. The city may also provide for major modifications to a vested application. And so those are other, you know, where we can go above and beyond those three items that are previously listed. So when we had this discussion with the Planning and Policy Commission, we laid out these three options. First one was to allow it for building permits, short plat subdivisions, and development agreements. Option two was, in addition to those three, we could add to that list, you know, site development permits could be some larger land use applications or all land use applications. We can, by policy and council's direction, can include language in the code related to that. Or option third was to have some sort of a limited time period until the adoption, after the adoption of Title 18 that could, could be pursued, so.
We have a question, if you could pause.
Sure. Thank you. Okay. So that I don't use the wrong terminology. Can you go through, let's say, for a multifamily housing project, what the different types of permits and applications they would get from kind of start to end, and which one of those are the land use applications versus these other types that you're saying could be an option in?
Sure. So a multifamily project that's more than four units under our existing code today would require SEPA. It would require, you know, depending on the scale of the project, it could be an administrative site development permit, or it could be a site development permit that's approved by the Development Commission. If it has a stream running through it, there is a possibility it might require a shoreline substantial development permit. So those are the top three or four that come to mind, and, and then, of course, a tree permit, if there's a separate tree regulations, but a lot of those things would be reviewed under the site development permit. If they were asking for a variance for a certain standard, it, under our existing code, it could be an administrative adjustment of standards, or if, or a variance with a public hearing and by a hearing examiner. So specifics of where the project is located, the scale of the project for a multifamily will determine some of those nuances, but it could be SEPA, shoreline, a site development permit, and maybe a few others. These are all under the land use application. Now, once these are approved, I mean, there's no prohibition from someone applying for these building, construction permits simultaneously under our code, so, but those are issued after the land use approval is, is approved. So those can be a building permit for the actual construction, other construction is, you know, if there's retaining walls, they may require a separate permit, a landscaping permit, a site work permit. So we have a slew of construction permits that will follow the land use approval.
So let me follow up with an question, then. It, it sounds like, from my reading, option one was kind of the most conservative. It was subdivision, short plats, and building permits, whereas option two included other things like site development permits and the land use applications, which would come earlier. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Just making sure I'm getting the difference between those. Thank you.
So that's pretty much the options we discussed with the Planning and Policy Commission, and I think our recommendation was just follow the, the first option. You know, all of these other options are legal. It's just, the first one is very clear about these three things, VSU. We've heard from developers on their concerns with option one, and, you know, so, so at this point, we're just exploring, you know, having this in an open, transparent way. So the other part, I think I want to bring it, make it clear, is this is the options we've laid out for council and Planning and Policy Commission to weigh in when the new code goes into effect. So what, what do we want the language in the new code to be? So as new applications come in under the new proposed code, how would those be treated? So the concerns we've heard are, you know, you change your code, you adopt the new code, we apply and spend our time applying for this application, but then the code changes while we haven't had the time to apply for a building permit, that they want, they want some assurances there that we won't do that. Reality is, we're not going to change the code, you know, immediately after this. And so, so that's one area. The, how we're going to treat the, the applications that are currently in the hopper is not what we're asking council to weigh in, because the existing code will apply to them and will evaluate it at the administration level, which code applies, what's the particular decision on a particular application. So I just wanted that to be clear. I think there was some public testimony in the previous PPC where that may have raised some confusion.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
Can you provide just a really brief summary of the pros and cons of each of the three options, you know, Y1, Y2, and Y3?
Yeah. So option one, you know, is the most predictable. People know this is what is going to vest us, and there's no, we treat some applications this way and the other one. So it's the most cleanest from, you know, you're applying it to these three things. So if you really are concerned about code changing, you have to apply for that. The con is, I think what we've heard from the development community is the building permit is the most expensive for them, for preparing the application, submitting the application. Our fees are more for building permits than they are for land use, so they have to, you know, commit to that. The other con we've heard is it takes us a long time to process a land use applications. Our building permits expire within 18 months of an application, but those are things we can accommodate in our code updates, that, you know, if you have a land use application and you've applied for a building permit, we're now going to pull the plug on you because the building official will, has the authority to grant an extension in, in those circumstances. We can make the language more clear to provide certainty on that. The option two, you know, accommodates the developers' concerns about, we've invested a lot of time into preparing for these larger projects, and we want some assurance other than from applying for a building permit, which will, which we will, but later, at this time, we want some guarantees that you're not going to change the code. The, if we pick and choose which applications to apply to and just go with the larger applications, you know, site development permits and shoreline permits and those kind of things, then potentially we could get an argument about why I'm a smaller, you know, project, why did I get a different treatment than a larger project? So there's, there's that of creating more complexity of treating some in one way and the other one. So that's a con for option two. Option three, we haven't really fleshed that out, you know, when we craft the language for it, but it gives some firm date. It, it prevents people from, you know, bringing in a flood of applications just to get vesting, so we don't get a flood of applications just so that the new code doesn't apply to them, that we have some sort of a certain date, time period within that. It accommodates folks, you know, who have a concern that we're not just going to change the code from them as we're reviewing these applications. So the first one is the most cleanest to implement, is more clear, but has these other issues for developers. Option two, you know, we, we can, if we treat, treat different applications differently, then we have to justify why and all that, and option three is just accommodating a little bit more time. I don't know if that answers.
No, that's super. Thank you.
Okay. So that's it for this particular topic. Any other questions for the city attorney this time? Okay. Thank you, Anne Marie, for joining us. So I'll keep going. She's waving by. So the next topic where we have stuff in our code, in the draft code, is the rezon process. So the intent here, and Stephen Padua, who's been working with the city attorney and on this particular topic, is also joining us, so feel free to ask any questions, and we may have him weigh in. Here, really, our focus has been to provide clarity between quasi-judicial rezones and legislative rezones. The boundaries between the two get blurred when it's a site-specific rezon but has an accompanying lane, a comprehensive plan amendment. So what we're hoping to provide is a clarity for everyone involved, for Planning and Policy Commission, for council, and then the other thing, you know, we never had a criteria for what makes it into the docket or not. So we've added the criteria for PPC to make a recommendation and council to make a decision on whether it makes it into the docket. We've included some exceptions to annual amendments, and those are under the state law, but just so that everyone's clear that we can make some amendments on as-needed basis for emergencies and other things that don't have, that are non-subject to the ones a year amendment limitation. Again, we've added the approval criteria for these rezones, and, you know, one of the things, when the city goes through the comprehensive planning process and establishes a comprehensive rezon, there really has to be something's changed from that time in order to apply this. And so we didn't have a criteria, what has changed from the time the city did this work. So things like that, that we felt were needed to provide. Now, what we are still working on is this cleaning up the boundaries between quasi-judicial and legislative rezones. It's still a work in progress, but one of the things that has come up is for site-specific rezones, which tend to act more like quasi-judicial matters, there's a limitation on one hearing only. There's a limitation of 120 days that we have to make a decision on. That doesn't always, you know, blend in with annual comp plan amendment process. So we're figuring out that process of how do these two tie in at the, at the end, but they also meet the 120-day and one public hearing process. So what we would like a committee to consider and give us some feedback on is, because it can only be one public hearing, that, you know, and it's treated as a quasi-judicial matter where you're limited from ex parte communication, you're, you know, subject to appearance of fairness, questions and concerns, that if council want, you know, wants to be, council has to be the decision-making authority, because under the state law, rezones have to have, be adopted by ordinance. So then it would come directly to council in a quasi-judicial matter. So if we go through the advisory, you know, decision from the Planning and Policy Commission, they really can't hold a public hearing, then what value does that add because public, you know? So we're still working through this, but if you have anything you'd like us to study more on this topic or to clean up from your perspective, we can accommodate that in the next draft. So I can pause at this topic and answer any questions.
So I, I did have a question. It was one that I sent in by email, but I think I wasn't clear about it. So I, I think you just answered, though. Council is actually required to be the quasi-judicial decision-maker for, for this and for all of the other, for all of the cases in this code that we would be in that role. It's required by law that we be in that role?
When you have to adopt the ordinance to rezon.
Okay.
So, and, so in a rezon, yes, the council and the comprehensive plan amendment, the council has to.
Okay. And there's no other cases where we would be in a quasi-judicial role?
No. We removed the other master site plan where the council had asked for not to be the decision-maker, so I'll go over that part.
Okay.
So we're talking rezones at this time.
Okay. So we, the ones that are in here, we are required by law to be the quasi-judicial.
Because you have to adopt an ordinance. Correct. The legislative body.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Ray?
Can you talk briefly to the difference between a quasi-judicial rezon and a legislative rezon? What are the characteristics of the?
Sure. So one example of a legislative rezon is, you know, the entire Central Issaquah was zoned, single-family residential, and, and times have changed, and you want it to be zoned multifamily, mixed-use. It's an area-wide, so one, it's not one particular property, but it's more of a impact to the entire, you know, sub-area of the city or something like that. That would be a legislative rezon. A particular property that has a particular, you know, so rezones can be two different. One can have an accompanying comp plan amendment, or one that doesn't have one. So if we, if a comprehensive plan was just residential, and it's currently zoned a single family, and we want to rezon, you know, someone wants to rezon it multifamily, you're not changing the comprehensive plan. So that's, that's not a legislative decision, because it's just, it doesn't have an accompanying comp plan. But anytime you have to change the comp plan, but it's still site-specific, that's where it gets kind of unclear. Our current code treats them legislative, and so we're trying to provide some clarity of very site-specific rezones that have an accompanying comp plan should be quasi-judicial under the new proposed code, and if so, then they come directly to council.
And there's reason to want them to be quasi-judicial versus legislative when there's a comp plan change involved?
If it's a specific property, then yes, they should be treated as quasi-judicial.
Is that because of state law or best practice, or?
State, I mean, case law.
Case law. Okay. Okay. Great. Thanks.
Keep going. All right. So other major changes in this section, definitions, so thank you to community members and council members that took a deeper dive into, so that we definitely need to scrub those, and we'll continue to work on refining them in the, in the next draft. But our thought process in that has been to make it clear, reference the state codes, take out redundant ones and such, and such. The neighborhood meetings were extremely confusing under our existing code. Some triggered an environmental neighborhood meeting, and others triggered collaborate, you know, community collaboration hosted by Development Commission, and others were just meetings. There were some projects that triggered both type of meetings, and so we've struggled with, how do we accommodate community members that don't draw that distinction between three different flavors of meetings? It's about the same project, but we also want to have an ability for it to, to answer questions, to hear from the community, and provide for that. So we've consolidated that and called it a pre-application, you know, neighborhood meeting or something like that. We can change the name so that it just says neighborhood meeting or something like that to make it clear. And then the administrative adjustment of standards is the other part. Our existing code has, you can ask for any standards to be administratively deviated if you meet this pretty broad, vague criteria, except for these five things, you know, FAR, density, you know, there's few things that we're not allowed to administratively change, but everything else can. We flipped that in the proposed draft to say, yes, we want to provide flexibility for certain things, but here are the 10 things that we want to have flexibility for. Anything else requires a variance from the hearing examiner, which is a public hearing process, and you really have to show your hardship criteria of meeting that. So it's public process, it's a much stronger bar to meet and to get a deviation on that, but then we accommodated where it did make sense and provide some flexibility options. You know, for instance, if you have a grove of trees that in your landscaping plan you can count towards instead of planting them in a row, then maybe we can make that adjustment in your site design. But then we have a specific criteria we're going to add in, in that specific chapter for when we can approve that, and it'll be a written decision earlier in the process on those things. Levels of review. So these are all over the map in our existing code. Where it belongs in, replacement regulations refer you to centrals, and then outside of central, it's a separate table, and the permitted uses, you know, establishes the level of review. So if it's a daycare, then it establishes whether it's a level two or level three. It doesn't take into account how big the, the daycare is. A small building versus a large building, it's the same process for that. So what we've attempted to do with this draft is to just have the permitted uses table to say whether the use is allowed or not allowed, and then have the threshold for review separate from the permitted uses table, and, and have that very clear, you know, established threshold for it. We'll get into the policy questions that we asked Planning and Policy Commission and shared with you. The other thing, you know, during the early gaps analysis, we asked, who should be the decision-maker on these quasi-judicial land use matters, and what the role of Development Commission should be? We heard loud and clear from the community members and from Development Commission that they value, they really value the Development Commission's role in evaluating these, and so we've kept Development Commission as a decision-maker. But we also heard Development Commissioners saying they're not the experts on traffic study or stormwater. study, or stormwater study, and you give us a large document, agenda packet, where they felt they brought in value was building design and site design, and addressing those kind of issues. So, this draft establishes where we could give some clear answers to developers earlier in the process, because they've gone through a technical review of their wetland, they've shown us what the report, you know, if it's a type-two or a type-three, we've had it peer reviewed, we've had an environmental neighborhood meeting, and we can tell them it's a type-three wetland, and it establishes 100-foot buffer, as opposed to, we can't give you an answer, wait till the end, and we don't know what Development Commission's going to do with it at the end. So, we're still working through some technicalities with this section, because it's only one public hearing for quasi-judicial matters, we want to make sure that, you know, those things, those Xs are crossed and Ts are done in the final draft. But, the proposed draft has the technical documents section in there. Public notification, we solicited input of what makes sense, and we have changed it from 300 feet to 500 feet, and also to property owners and tenants. When majority of our community members are renters, we wanted to ensure that everyone was notified. Then, a lot of clarification and simplification, text with tables, consolidation, and so, the policy questions we have for council, that we shared with Planning and Policy Commission is, what's the size of buildings that should be reviewed administratively, and which ones should go to the Development Commission? And then, we also have a policy question about cities' capital improvement projects, city parks, streets, and other infrastructure. There tends to be a lot of confusion about where the city is in the process. A lot of these projects go through public process during making it into the CIP list. You know, that's a public process. And then, when it goes through a design process, Parks Department will hold open houses and invite the community members to weigh in on the design, and so, a lot of outreach occurs at that time. And then, when they're ready to apply for their land use and construction permits, it gets tangled up in that process. But, any surprises that come down at that point for compliance with code result in delays to the project, you know, community's money being spent on internal review and process. So, what we're recommending here in your, I have slides that are slightly, so we can come back to the details of that one, since I'm talking about public projects, I'll keep going here. So, we divided it into two different parts, you know, one within the existing right-of-way. So, if you're repairing and maintaining an existing paved area, if you're putting a new sewer line, or, you know, within an existing paved area, or you're doing a layover of a street, that probably shouldn't require any land use approval unless SEPA or Shoreline are required. If you're expanding your infrastructure, or streets, or building new streets, again, we feel the public outreach and input needs to be standardized, and when it happens earlier in the city's capital projects, but that's the time when major changes can be made, you know, different evaluations can be done. And then, we, and we actually have a consolidated permit, we can call it capital improvement permit, where we hold the city accountable for meeting the rules and regulations that have been adopted. So, tree regulations, critical area regulations, and all of that. And if there is a construction permit required, that would be all bundled in. So, it'll be a simultaneous land use and construction permit. What we've heard from project managers is, when we split them into five different projects, and each one has a list of conditions, it becomes hard during the bidding process to track these multiple conditions and different things, and then, every time a contractor has a change order, because this condition got missed here, that costs the city more money as well. So, hoping to, to have a more robust public outreach and a stream, you know, a clear path earlier with a more streamlined review process, but still holding ourselves accountable to the regulations that we've adopted. So, the second one is really not in the right-of-way. So, capital improvement projects that are not within the street, a new park, a maintenance of a new, you know, an existing park, so repair and maintenance, again, no land use, SEPA and Shoreline, if they're triggered. Expansion of an existing use, or a new park, again, robust public outreach and engagement during the design phase, consolidated construction review, permit review, consolidated land use and permit review at the end. What we heard from Planning and Policy Commission is, when we engage with the community members earlier, we, we should then keep them informed as it, as the project, you know, moves through the construction phases and other phases. So, we'll incorporate some of those, you know, processes during the, the permit review process to do that. So, I'll go back real quickly to the options for which ones go to Development Commission, which ones don't. With the Planning and Policy Commission, we shared two options. One, our existing code has these high-visibility priority corridors. So, the way the existing code is written, if you're along these streets, and you are in Central Issaquah area, or Talas or Highlands, anything over 4,000 gets automatically bumped to a Development Commission. If you're outside of those three areas, anything, regardless of the size, gets bumped up to Development Commission. And the, anywhere outside of those three areas, the thresholds really vary for each use. There's a different threshold that establishes which criteria. For retail and office, it's one, for the other ones. So, it becomes a very hard process to figure out who's actually going to make the decision on which project, depending on where you are, what the use is, and all that. So, our, our hope is to streamline. When we asked the Planning and Policy Commission, do you care about this high-visibility frontage? The, you know, I think there was consensus to not go down that path, and just go with a threshold. Now, we haven't landed on what threshold makes sense. They wanted us to come back with some more options. We think we can develop a few more options, but want committee's feedback on where you think we, we need to flush it out more. So, one option is, anything 4,000 or more goes to Development Commission, which could trigger a lot more workload for Development Commission, maybe. Any, or, and then, and then, keep anything below, so, one, we could really only send 45,000 or more under option one. We could send anything over 4,000 or more. Or, we could, we think in the middle, 10,000 is where I think we've landed on SEPA thresholds, where we want the buildings to be sustainable, and that's a good-sized building, but not huge. You know, we gave you some samples of the size of the buildings, so, King County Library on Front Street is 15,000 square feet, the City Hall is 35,000 square feet, so those would all go to the Development Commission. So, our recommendation is, we land at 1,000, at 10,000 square feet. Anything above that goes to Development Commission. Anything below that will still include a public process, but it will be issued administratively. It'll still be subject to the same criteria, but it won't involve Development Commission. So, that's all we have in terms of options for you at this point.
Council President Walsh. Can you talk a little bit more about the burden on the Development Commission? Also, about what the difference is for a developer? Whether we think that we would get potentially people avoiding building above that criteria, and thus miss out on some missing middle? And, let's see, so, volume of projects that this might send to DC, time requirements, all of that?
Yeah. So, in terms of comparing it with the existing process, you know, anything along those high-visibility streets is automatically going to Development Commission at 4,000, or even below in certain areas. So, so, we don't think, you know, even if it's 4,000, even if you land at, anything above 4,000 goes to Development Commission. It shouldn't exponentially increase their case, but it's hard to tell what the redevelopment in the future is going to look like, and are we going to get a lot of smaller 10,000? But you're absolutely right, once you establish a threshold, people will try and avoid that higher review process, and just want to build 9,999 square feet, because they're not wanting, you know, that, that they may feel, may save them more time not having to go through that process, which isn't necessarily true. You know, once we get the code updated, it shouldn't, it, it'll be the same criteria. It's whether we evaluate and produce a staff report, or the Development Commission then evaluates it. So, in terms of the workload for DC, you know, we haven't done an in-depth analysis of what, you know, what historically we've received, scale of projects, and how many they get. But since I've been here for a year, I think we, they haven't, you know, they approved the school district, they approved the Brown Bear, and maybe one or two other neighborhood meetings that they've had, so.
So, I'm trying to figure out how I come at this information, and understand it, so that I can provide good feedback. So, you're saying, you don't think it's going to be an exponential increase in the number of projects that Development Commission is going to have to look at? You haven't asked Development Commission what their preference is necessarily, but you did ask PPC about that. What do other cities do?
We can look around, you know, I think everyone has their own unique, this is what we, you know, what brings value. So, it's not necessarily what we're worked for one city versus us. I mean, we, I think Issaquah's had this, this high-visibility street option floating around, and, you know, if there are really unique places that you truly care about, then maybe we continue down that path, that that deserves a higher scrutiny. But, so, there's really no right or wrong answer in this one. It's really whatever the community and council chooses to do. The outcome, I think if we, if we focus on the outcome, it's the same criteria, whether you're, whether the staff is evaluating it. So, the problem in the past has been, we don't have good criteria, we don't have good basis. So, where PPC and Development Commission have been invaluable is really looking at the criteria, and Development Commission has looked at the criteria. We can check back with them. We engaged them earlier in the conversation, in a role of DC, and got some good feedback, you know. We don't care about the technical pieces, we do care about the, so, so, we can check in with them on the procedures section, if that, if council wants us to go to them and get their feedback.
Do you have any sense, because we do currently have this high-visibility streets versus not, is there a way that you could look at a project that was on a high-visibility street that had to go to DC, and the amount of time that it took to go through the process versus one that was not, and went through the administrative? Because I'm just trying to understand what the time difference is. And the reason I ask about the other communities and what they do is because I don't want to lose a missing-middle project to Kirkland, because they have a different level of review required for that. If we have the opportunity to have that project here, I want to make sure we're doing everything right. So, I think I'm interested in both of those sets of information.
Okay. Yeah, it's hard, you know, the time issue, because we're cleaning up the code, that's going to improve, right? So, so, using our existing benchmarks is probably not going to give you the right information you need to make an informed decision. But, what hap, so, so, my recommendation on this would be, you know, is, if your concern is the, you want to have a more, not have more onerous process for certain type of projects, that perhaps we can articulate what those kind of projects you might be thinking of, that we, we look at those specific things of, you know, adding a public hearing. I mean, out of the top of my head, I can say, if you go to a public hearing with the Development Commission, it involves, you know, we'll still be notifying in the other process, it's just the public hearing aspects of it, and then coordinating the meeting. So, it might add two months to the permit review process. I mean, out of the, I'm just throwing out numbers, with the new streamlined, efficient code, and that might be the difference at a very high level.
Fantastic. Thanks.
Yep. So, yeah, I think those are the two questions with seeking feedback. Public projects, what, you know, do you, this is the process we think we've laid out. If committee agrees, I think we got agreement from Planning and Policy Commission on this, with some feedback about keeping community informed, then we can craft, start crafting language, actual regulatory language to put in the code. And then, what's the threshold to go to DC? Yep.
Okay. So, are you concluded with your presentation?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Do we have any questions before we take public comment on this section? Okay. Then, I will, at this time, call for a public comment. Is anyone wishing to comment on this item? Okay. All right. Connie Marsh.
No delayed vesting, number one, is the best option, but our problem with vesting at this point in time is our criteria for a complete application is too low. We often get poor, incomplete, or downright wrong information when we get a complete application, and then they're vested in something that is not even reality. And I, we, I think we need to change that, because if we let people vest, we want them in accurately. Right now, we don't review any of it, we just say, oh, okay, we got the stuff. It isn't, is it good stuff? So, there were nine pieces in that pattern. For legislative rezones, must the city allow an applicant to apply for a legislative rezone if asked? Or can they deny that? That happened with what? Melvin, with the school district, they, they were able to mush two parts of an application together, because they asked for it, and we didn't seem to have a way to stop it. So, I don't want to put things into this code that the city cannot say no to if the applicant asks for it. I think we always need to have a possibility to be able to say no, even if that is slightly different criteria than a legislative rezone, because I could see that you would have different criteria there. I am concerned that the consolidated public meetings could be incredibly complex, somewhat like the PPC meetings that have 300 pages, and then, in two hours, you are expecting a back-and-forth, good conversation between the developer and the concerned community members. So, if all the topics are put together, then I don't, and it's a, and it's a big deal, I don't think you're going to have the conversation that is appropriate for the intent of those meetings. So, if, if it's light, and there isn't much content to it, or if it's only one topic or another, like it's all environmental and not very much everything else, I can see a meeting would probably work. But, if it's big, I think you should be, split it up. And I don't know how to get that in code, but if you look at what you think success is, I think you could, you will find frustration and potential failure sometimes at these meetings. So, it has to be appropriate in order to push them all together. And so, the adjustment of standards language puts us almost exactly where we have been before, with the same level of frustration. I don't see that the criteria are any easier to implement, and to have the developer do what fits the code better. I don't see that it's possible to say no to most of those. So, it's the same conversation again, and to me, that is a huge thing. So, now, threshold review. I was pondering this in the middle of the night, of course, and the development agreements in the Central Issaquah Plan have all had EISs, and the Central Issaquah Plan in the central Issaquah plan have all had EISs, and the central Issaquah plan has some extra permitting on top of that. So in those areas that have had a lot of review already, I could see that the threshold would be higher. However, because these are tight areas, think there needs to be, take extra care that the community around these areas is very aware of what is happening and how it might impact their lives and their businesses, because even a 4,000-square-foot building in the wrong place could kill a business if, if it harmed their access. And so you really need to make sure that the community is not left out of the conversation because you've made a threshold very high. And I don't really see that happening here. We have a little bit more push out, but I, you know, how, how do you, how do you take a notification and make it an act of community? So then we get to our public projects versus our private projects in process. And the community is totally baffled in, oh, it's a public works project, it's a parks project, it's a private project, and we're going to talk about a public project way out here, and then what comes in is something very different than they talked about at the higher level, because you have value engineering, you have all kinds of different things that change, and the community is left out of that conversation. I personally would like to see a consistent process with parks and public works and all public projects so that the community can know it's going to come out early, and we are going to have touch points through this, 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 and this, and then everyone will know what to expect all the time. And right now, it's basically a crap shoot, and that isn't even a bad word because it's a game.
Ms. Marsh, your time is up, so could you summarize?
I'm going to summarize by saying, five minutes isn't long enough on really complex topics, and I'm the only one here. So I would ask that I be able to finish my few more topics of conversation so that I can have complete process.
Okay. And we also are available by email for any of these topics.
Yes, but it's not the same.
Okay. You can finish.
So then, the administrative approval has fewer eyes, so when you reduce the threshold, you are basically not giving it as good of a scan. Development Commission is pretty educated, and they can often take a project that is okay and make it much better. And I think that's what we want in our town, is we want really good projects, even if it takes a little more review, because we don't just need adequate projects, even though it's sort of what we technically want to have. And technical documents would be coming in before anyone even really knows what's happening. So I don't really understand, is everybody going to be noticed when a technical document comes out because basically you don't even have a project yet that's out? All you have are technical documents. And those will be finalized, and you will lose your appeal ability if the community does not know. Right now, you can, you appeal the project and the technical documents at the same time. So I'm really concerned with that. Level-one review, same with parks and public works engineering, you don't have your technical reviews in advance. And so then, by the time you know there's a wetland or there's traffic impacts, basically it's already been approved in the level-one review by, by the planning department. And that is it. Thank you. I appreciate your, your minor time extension.
Thank you. All right. Committee, so if we could walk through the questions, that would be helpful, and we can take them one at a time, as we've been doing with Title 18, since there are many different parts of these, of these items.
Director Dollywell, just a quick question. So to get a, a building permit or a site, short subdivision or division application approved, or does, I mean, for it to vest, does it have to be approved and complete? And do we have a definition of what complete is? And, and so I can't just like chuck a bunch of stuff at you and say, here it is, and then say, okay, now I'm vested, I'm good to go. It's got to actually have gone further than that?
Yeah. So we've, we've had discussions on it. My preference would be to have that clearly laid out in the code, so there's no questions. I think the current draft talks about a checklist that's maintained by the department, but I think that just leads to, so for the purposes of land use application, I think in the next draft, we intend to hardwire what, you know, basic minimum requirements are for completeness. And the way the land use application requirement under the state law, we, you know, we will follow, is you get an application, you have 28 days to determine it complete, and then, you know, we notify the applicant, it's complete, and then we immediately start the public notification process. So within 14 days, then we would circulate the notice to all the surrounding property owners that we've received this application, we'll post the site, whatever the notice requirements are triggered. So all the technical reports and everything will be uploaded at that time on the city's active projects list, at the time it's deemed complete.
Let me just clarify. So there's really no approval of these documents? It's really that I have all of the things and they're complete?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I was just going to mention, it's on page 79 of the draft, the application completeness. In case you want to look it up, there's basically four criteria. It fully complies with the form and contents of application, meets any other procedural submission requirements, includes full payment of fees, and is sufficient for continued processing.
Yeah, and, and we will revise that in the consolidated draft, because I think the first one is just referring you to a checklist that is maintained outside of the code. And, and so we want to say, we need an owner affidavit, you need a site plan, you need a, you know, basic minimum requirements. We intend to have that be part of the code in the next iteration. So it, it will get worked on.
So is that coming back to us after?
As part of the consolidated draft, yeah.
Oh, goodness gracious. Is there going to be a set, like, we've talked a lot about this set of like future updates and all of that. Is there a way that we can get those coming to us separate from the full draft?
We'll highlight what has changed, yeah. So we will include a list of things that have changed from the first version that you've seen. So we're working on how we package the next time you all touch, so you don't have to look at it all over again, that you can focus on the things that have changed from the first version to, to now.
Okay. I am intimidated by that concept, and I will look at what it is at that point, but I know we're going to be given a hundreds, if not thousands, of-page document at some point, and, okay.
Yeah, I mean, the expectation is that as goes through the public process, it evolves, right? I mean, you all have good feedback, community members have good feedback, so this is the first draft. It'll, it'll have changes. We want to make it effective for you all to not spend too much time, and you can, you know, highlight where the changes are. So we're working on, but if you have feedback on how you'd like to see the consolidated draft, where we can accommodate that.
Yeah, I think there's a difference between, we were handed a piece, we made comments on it, and you made changes based on those comments or based on PPC's comments. There's a difference between that and seeing something for the first time and having the ability to process it, see how it relates to everything. So I don't really have a question, just a nervousness in my heart.
Fair enough.
Okay. Would you be able to bring up the first question? I believe the first one was the vesting with the three options. Okay. Do we have any other questions before we start on the first? Okay. So the first item is what vesting options does the city have with respect to Title 18 update? And we have three options that are put forward with the administration and staff's recommendation being option one. Who would like to kick us off? Councilor Ray?
Thanks. Thank you for doing the pros and cons of the three options, because it really helped crystallize me on, on, there was no compelling reason to go beyond, in my opinion, beyond option number one. So, you know, I, I think you're on the right track with option one. I think if there is something that, some other option that would make sense and would have, you know, would, would give us more control and more flexibility, that'd be great. But I think the way it is right now, option one is certainly my preferred option.
Yeah, I'm, I also fall under option one. I will be very curious how the administration's going to handle this big update, because as you said, this is applying to future updates of the code. So I'll just put that as a question mark of, I'd like to hear at some point what the administration's recommendation is for that.
I agree with my colleagues on the committee. I also think that for the, the reasons that were listed, predictability, and that it's the cleanest way, as you said, I think that option one is the way to go. I also wanted to acknowledge that we did receive comments, I believe that, and as was mentioned, PPC also received comments. So we did take those into consideration, but I think on this item, option one. So we are all in agreement, we can move on to, unless you need anything else from us, we can move on to the next one?
I am honestly uncertain. I think this is a big, big decision. I would like it to go to the Development Commission to get some feedback. I don't, my concerns here are putting in something that's too onerous, that's going to stop development that would be beneficial for the community, while at the same time potentially eliminating a very important public process. And I just don't know where the right size of building is. I would love to know what other communities do, because from my perspective, that gives me a sense of, okay, we're not doing something too hard that's going to make development want to happen somewhere else. So I think that would be the feedback I have on it. I, I like some of the other streamlining that you guys did on the levels, and I really appreciate that work. I just don't quite know where it should be Development Commission and not.
And do you have thoughts on that high-visibility-streets aspect? Because that's another aspect that's probably good for us to give some feedback.
Yeah, I mean, I like the concept of it. I don't know whether that in itself gives a reason to move down to 4,000 square feet. So I, I think there's something there. Whether or not that means that basically any project that's happening on a high-visibility street should come into contact with DC, I don't know. So again, I'd like to see if any other communities use that as logic. Is there any way to say something, well, I was going to say something that's retailer commercial has to go through, whereas housing, could you have a different square footage requirement for that?
Yeah, but we're trying not to kind of tease out, you know, because right now, it's more complex. And, and the, the issue, I think with the high visibility, I think the intent is good. However, if someone has a project one parcel down, and they're going to say, well, we, the community members would say, well, how come you didn't tell us that this was a public hearing and with the Development Commission, but, you know, this one did. So it's just raises those kind of...
Yeah, and I think Director Dollywell before was talking about the daycare, and a big daycare, a little daycare, that it was based on use previously, and that that was kind of, it was more complicated, for sure. We could base it on use, but we're trying to make it more simple and consistent. Councilor Ray?
I just want to jump in. I think the high-visibility frontage just adds a level of complexity that we, that we don't need, so I would be very much in favor of taking that out. And I'd like to make this as simple as we can. So I think the difficult thing, and I think this is where the council president was going, is where's that threshold? And I think that's the question you really asked, where's that threshold? And so I think some, a couple of dimensions that would help us make that determination. One is, I agree, what, where, where do other people do it? I mean, is it 4,000, is it 10,000, is it 45,000? And then the second thing is, what would be the, you know, comparison of the number of development reviews that would go to DC under which threshold level? So I mean, it would be interesting to see where those, those knees, where it breaks. And then it wouldn't be really, I don't know how to do this either, but it would be interesting to talk to the building community and say, you know, what's, what's it mean to you? I mean, if, if it's an extra month, if it's an extra two months, where does it start to become like, I'm not going to build in Issaquah? So, so I, I think that one, you know, could use a little more input, and some feedback from DC would be good. But I guess I don't feel like we know the answer right now either, other than to pull it out of the air, and that feels wrong.
Director Dollywell, do you have comments and thoughts on this from the building community that you've heard?
You know, we, we didn't get any specific comments from folks on this thing. When we originally were asking whether it should go to the hearing examiner, I think Master Builder Association and, and the development community preferred that. I mean, they're used to that being the case with a lot of other communities. Development Commission has a long roots here, bring value, we heard loud and clear from the community, so we, you know, went with that option. But really, in terms of what other people do, you know, we can, that's easy, we can look, look around and give you how many of them actually use volunteer boards to approve quasi-judicial matters, how many don't, and, and if they, what the, what's administrative, what is a public hearing, whoever is the decision maker, whether it's the DC or the hearing examiner, we can put that together, and then look at historically what has gone to DC. It sounds like that information would be helpful. And then we can plan a meeting with DC and just share this and get their feedback. Yep, we can do that.
Okay. If that's, if that's enough for now, I will add that I agree about the high-visibility streets. I think it's, I think it's very complicated, and as this, as this city grows and changes too, it would continue to be more and more complicated. So I, I don't support that. I think, I also, in thinking through this, and then with the examples that you gave, as far as the library being about 15,000 square feet, I believe you said, I think the thresholds are probably about in the right place for the review levels, but it would be great, great to get that as far as the 10,000 going to DC and less being administratively approved. But it would be great if it's not, if it's possible to make decisions on our recommendation on all the other items, and then for this one to get more information, because it is true, it's, it's hard to not feel like we're kind of pulling the numbers out of thin air.
Yeah, we'll bring all that back with the consolidated draft. You know, we'll, we'll take all that information to DC, share it with the Planning and Policy Commission during the consolidated draft packaging, and then when, once it comes back to you as part of the consolidated draft, well, it'll be vetted out a little bit more, and we'll have all the information you were looking for.
Okay. That sounds good. The other, the other, one last thing I will add is another reason why, and I think it says this somewhere in our materials, another reason why the 10,000 might be good is because we have previously set that as the threshold on the, on the last SEPA conversation. So that's, that's a threshold that we've set, and it would be somewhat more internally consistent if we use that for other things in the code.
Sounds good.
Okay.
And then for the last question, cities' capital improvement projects process. Do you have any feedback on what we've laid out?
I'll go ahead. I, I think PPC did a good job understanding that there is a lot of feedback that goes into a public project in the early...
feedback that goes into a public project in the early stages. I do think that having a, you know, notify me list or something like that that allows for updates to go out would be important. I think similar to, you know, I'm going back into the construction code of conduct notes that I'd put down, but I really want to be better about getting communication back out to the public. And so I'd like to see signage on our public projects that are similar to what are required on private projects. Well, probably more extensive, but that have a QR code that go to a website that is related to that project that talks through what the schedule is, what the feedback received from the community is, what the adjustments, what the timeline. I think all of those things go to the concept of we've engaged from this point, we're committed to staying engaged, and here's the results of that engagement. And I think that just helps take the process through to full completion.
Councilor Ray?
This one's hard for me because we're talking about this public engagement as part of the permitting process, not as part of being good city government and good stewards of, of city projects. So I'm a little bit torn because there's this part of me that says, I think that if we got a process that's causing us as the city to jump through hoops and incur costs, and so we're going to short circuit that, then we got a process that's broken because that means we're driving our developers through that same process. That being said, we're also a different beast because we have different procurement rules and different things like that. So it's not the same playing field. So I think I could get behind the proposal. But I think, and I think this is where the council president was going too, is, but that doesn't mean we stop talking to the public about what we're doing with public projects. But it's more related to a public project than it is the permitting and land use review of a public project. So yes, I think we can do this and simplify the permitting part, but no, we can't stop the communications part.
Well, I agree with all of that. And I think, I think the point is well taken that the public input for these projects does begin earlier and it should begin earlier when the city is, when there is a public project relative to a private project. And so I, I agree generally with the recommended way forward. And yeah, I think the comments are to make sure that we continue to engage the community throughout the process.
Sure.
Do you, does, do you have any?
No, I think I agree. The success of the streamlining of the permitting process relies on standardized touchpoints, clarity among community members of where the project is, the items you were saying, a sign that takes you to a website, we maintain a website for each project, you know, those kinds of, but also, so I think we, we can make that work. The Title 18 is the land use and the permitting piece. The other part of the capital projects is administration, you know, us working with different project managers and things and streamlining and standardizing. But it'll help the community members because there's so much confusion about, we didn't get notification of this, it didn't go through the permitting, did it go through the permitting? This one had an open house and this one didn't. So I think that will happen outside of the Title 18 work, the, the engagement and standardization of the capital projects. But the permitting piece, we'll put it in the Title 18.
I want to put a plus one to what Councilmember Ray said about, you know, if we're having a problem with it, then we need to make sure we're looking at what that process is for the developers. And so my only concern with changing the process for a public project is that we don't have to go through the pain and thus want to update it. But on the other side, I also know that your staff is going through the pain of administering it every day and so has a view into it. So, yeah.
Sure. No, I understand your concerns there. I mean, we want to be the good stewards of public money and do our, even above and beyond what the regulations we expect for everyone else. It's just that, you know, private development doesn't go through the public process before. You know, that's the first time folks see that this is a project whereas capital projects have already gone through the process. So there's a distinction between those two.
Okay. Do you have what you need from the committee on this one?
We do, thank you. So we can move on to the next item.
I have a few, are you moving on to the code of conduct?
No. Oh, we are? Okay.
Yes.
I have a few general comments too. I'm at the next like question, so.
Yep. So as I was looking through it on the variance section, I was pretty surprised that section didn't mention the decision maker. I'm sure it's somewhere else in the code, but I feel like that would be useful information to include in that section. There was a section about legal nonconformity for the Isco Highlands and Tellis projects that were exempt from that. And I just didn't understand that. I don't know why we have specific projects that are already called out in code.
Do you want me to answer?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, the way the replacement regulation framework is in the code, it lists every single parcel and then what the permitted, you know, capacity is. So for a lot of these things, it was zero gross square footage because they were already developed. And we had these long tables embedded in the code for a lot of these parcels that were already developed with a development capacity of zero. So we've taken those that are fully developed and added them here that, you know, if they were developed under the code, then that's what they, they were approved as. So it was a plat that went through this, that's what those regulations apply to them. So the other part, the, the projects that had unbuilt, you know, undeveloped properties, those are the only ones that we've left on the table. So instead of having these scrolling tables in the replacement regulations, it's just parsing them out. These are already developed, these rules apply. These are the ones that still have so much gross square footage of entitlements that are embedded in the code. And that's, those are the regulations that apply. So there's no substantive change. It's more streamlining the code so that you don't have scrolling tables where each parcel number is assigned.
So it's legal nonconformity because those parcels that are undeveloped are still assigned to the previous code because they were in a development agreement or?
No, the legal nonconformity is only for the developed parcels. So the undeveloped, this doesn't apply to the undeveloped parcels.
I'm going to have to go back and look at what is...
I think look at them both together. So the legal nonconform, and maybe, I can walk you through in terms of what, how the existing code is set up. And this, this doesn't materially change anything. It's just not having scrolling tables in the code.
So then you're saying the, the items that are listed there are the areas that haven't been developed. Is that correct?
Correct. So the table will only include undeveloped properties.
Okay.
Because if I understand correctly, before it listed everything that was already developed also. So it's everything which you don't need. Okay. It just, it was surprising to me seeing that as I was going through the code.
Sure. And it was odd to say your development is zero because someone could tear down and rebuild, you know, over a long period of time. So that's why we separated that out.
Yeah. Okay. And then just, I think the last comment that I had written down, I really appreciate in the part two of the procedures section, that that as new code has kind of a Q and A format. The titles of it are, you know, how do I know if my permit is approved and things like that. I really like that as a concept. I think that's very clear. The only thing I came up to is, not a lot of people like to read the procedures and all of that section. So if somebody else is starting, or if somebody's starting at another point, let's say they go to look at the zones or something for multifamily, how do they know to come back to that section? Is there something that points them from other areas of the code there?
Yeah, no, I have that in my notes. I think you've, you know, you've expressed an interest in knowing the roadmap of someone, I want to do this. How do they know which sections apply? So that'll most likely come with the implementation of the code, but, you know, and handouts and other things that we'll produce. But even in the table of contents, you know, as we consolidate, we'll try and make it explicitly clear to the extent we can of an order. You go here, first you determine your, you know, what's the zoning? And then you go to this chapter to determine if the use is allowed. Then you determine what, you know, form and intensity means, what other development standards apply. And then how do you apply your application as in the procedure? So we can put something, you know, short and sweet, but then more detailed information during the implementation phase.
I love that. Thanks.
Okay. I had just a few comments on, generally. I think the definitions, you mentioned this, there's a lot of definitions. Some of them, I think that list basically needs to be scrubbed because one of our goals with this, one of our umbrella goals, overarching goals with this is to make it easy to use, readable. And so if it's a commonly known word or a word that you can look it up in any dictionary and it would be the same meaning as what's in our code, I don't think we need to define it in our code. It also sends you to different places for different parts of the definitions, which I understand is necessary for some cases, but it just ends up being a lot. So if we could get that into a more manageable number of necessary definitions that are unique to this code and important for people to know, that would be, that would be great. The other thing, I saw that some other, some other codes, it seems like if the word is only used once, they just define it where it's used. And then you don't have to put it also in the definitions. And then it's also right where the person would need to know the definition of that word when they're looking at the code. So that was one thing. One other thing on the definitions is if there's outdated language or seemingly outdated language and it's in an RCW or in a code that we don't have control over, I think it would be good for, I would like us to consider just going to that.
Reference that.
Yeah, reference that. So we don't duplicate this language. And you know the examples that I mentioned. So the other one that I had is just two things I liked, which is I like the, and I wanted to say thank you for the changes to notifying tenants and also the increased radius, the 500 feet. I think that's, that's a very positive change. We are consolidating meetings, but we're also expanding that range. And I think we're also making, by simplifying the process, we're making more meaningful engagement opportunities for the community. So I'm supportive of that. And then also wanted to flag support for the changes to treat the treasures list separately in the code so that they don't have to come into compliance with our code because, with certain aspects of the code, because they are, they are treasures. So keeping them the way they is, the way they are meets all of our goals for the code. So, yeah, I thought that was a great change. And I know you've mentioned it before, but this was the first time I think we actually saw the wording, how it was implemented. Those are my comments. Do you have anything else before we go to the next and final item? All right. You have what you need from our committee?
I do. Thank you for all your time.
Great. Okay. So then the second item will be ID 12, no, ID 1092 Contractor Code of Conduct.
Yeah. And so James Gray, our building official, is here to present. James, are you going to share your screen and do the presentation? Or did you want me to pull it up?
I can do it, Director.
Okay.
Can you see the screen?
Not yet. So under share, you have to go into the application and then PowerPoint.
Maybe you should share.
Okay.
Sorry.
No worries. So I'm trying to get to your SharePoint site, Chris, where you've saved them.
I'll send you the LinkedIn teams.
Okay. Okay.
There we go. Okay, are we ready?
Yep. Yes, we're ready.
Thanks so much, committee. My name's James Gray. I am the building official with the City of Issaquah. And I'm here to talk to you about the proposed contractors' code of conduct. Next slide. So our purpose is to give the committee some information about our existing process, which includes a preconstruction documentation and meeting process for regulating things like parking and contractor conduct on sites. Next slide, please. So we would like some direction from the committee. We would request information about our current preconstruction requirements checklist and whether or not we need a separate code of conduct or other tool that should be developed and incorporated into our current practice. Little bit of background, we understand that there have been concerns about parking and construction hours, site conditions, and public complaints about particular construction sites. And as a result, this item was added to the city, citywide work plan. Since at least 2018, community planning and development, prior to this was development services, used something called a preconstruction meeting requirement checklist. And this checklist functions as both a meeting agenda and list of requirements for contractors that we go through with the contractors before the process, before the construction process starts. Covers things like parking and hours of operation. It's used at every preconstruction meeting to discuss the project scope. Some of these are very large projects, some of them are smaller. But it includes a developer's construction team and the city's construction oversight team. This is building inspectors, site inspectors, there might be a planner, there might be a plans examiner there. It just depends on the size of the project. And the developer, the contractor is required to, they actually get read through this entire checklist and they can ask questions about it. And then they sign it, they get a copy, and they take it with them and store it at the site. So there are additional items that we might consider in a contractor code of conduct besides what is already in our preconstruction checklist, which is included in your agenda packet as, and as an addendum item. There's a commercial and a residential that you've been included as the detail. But we'd like to talk about keeping noise levels down, which of course is regulated under the Washington administrative code. And our City of Issaquah is beautifully cleaned and well maintained. And obviously, we want to keep that up. We want community information about this project and about every project. And that, that topic comes up more and more often. And so we would like to address that in a potential contractor code of conduct. And of course, doing construction in a safe manner that maintains code of conduct. And of course, doing construction in a safe manner that maintains public safety is paramount for us. So in addition to a contractor code of conduct, we can include more, more oversight by field inspectors. So on some of these really large projects, violations can occur because subcontractors and even contractors change over time. We might start with a pre-construction checklist, and it might be two years down the line until a complaint is received about a project, complete different list of subcontractors at that point. We want to have some community education on the tools that are available to make complaints and to make staff aware of issues, like see, click, fix, just simple phone calls and emails. And we'd like to talk about onsite construction notification signs that actually post the contractor code of conduct, so everyone can see it. In addition, we have a new code enforcement process that allows us to use some additional enforcement tools under Title 16, which include things that are, that are, that are pretty severe, like stop work orders and even revocation of permit if we need to do that to get compliance. So we've offered a couple of options for you. Option number one is continuing to use our pre-construction requirements checklist that we've been using for some time, the commercial and residential, to address the contractor conduct. And the second one is to develop a separate contractor code of conduct tool. And it will, it will basically address those items that are on those checklists, but roll that up into more of a consolidated, consolidated document that is more easily understood and can be posted onsite. And again, we've, we've proposed some additional items to address noise, construction site maintenance, keeping the community informed, public safety, and other things that can be incorporated. And we're seeking committee's input on any other specific items that committee might think is, should be included on that code of conduct. So the administration would like to recommend option two, and that would be developing a separate contractor code of conduct tool to address these additional concerns and use it in addition to our pre-construction documents. With that, we get to the timing and next steps. After the committee provides, provides feedback, CPD will proceed in accordance with the options selected, and we'd like to propose coming back to the committee in November with the results. And with that, we're back to our direction.
Great. Thank you, James. Does the committee have any questions at this point? Councilmember Ray?
Thanks. That's, that's great. Have you, in putting together what the content of the code of conduct would be, have you done any outreach or any engagement with, with the community? I was thinking that there's probably some people out there who have some, some other ideas about what might be included in this and make, make our contractors better neighbors.
Thank you for the question, council member. We have, in fact, just today, we've gotten a couple of emails, which I think have come to council and also to, to staff regarding a few other things. Control of noxious weeds on sites was, was one of them. And we, we have a process in place to do that. So we could certainly incorporate that into our code of conduct. I think probably the, the loudest voice we've heard is about more opportunities for community involvement and education. And so we want to make sure that we have that tool for folks to be able to report issues and get them in in a timely manner so that we can get them addressed in a timely manner.
All right. Super. Thank you.
Council President, how does this apply to non-building projects, things like utilities, roadwork, right-of-way projects, parks, trails, all of that? And does it, is the intention for it to apply just to private developers, or also to ourselves as a public developer and any contractors that we might bring in for our projects?
Thank you for the question, Council President. So the pre-construction process, where we sit down with the contractor and go through this pretty exhaustive list and have them sign everything, and it's customized for that, is, is for building permits and large site work projects. It is not, it's not a process that we, that we currently have in place for every utility project, for instance, or we got comments about cell towers and some things like that. That doesn't mean that we don't have a tool to promulgate that contractor code of conduct to those sites or to take complaints about them. We can certainly do both.
So we're saying currently, the, the process that we currently have, which is that pre-development meeting, wouldn't happen with these other types of construction. But in the future, if we had a code of conduct that would be distributed to those types of construction activities, and we would have the expectation. But also, is there not a public notification board for those types of activities, construction activities, because that isn't a building permit?
So, Council President, there are some notification processes. I can't tell you specifically what, what all of them are. We have our major projects lists, and Public Works has major projects lists. If it requires a permit, if, and, and those public projects, most of those public projects require permits, those contractors meet with us in the same way they, they would if it were a building permit. I can't tell you that every one of those goes through that, this same process, but that's something we can certainly investigate.
Okay. Now, that brings up another question, because we just talked about the other information, which was the Title 18 process and procedures. And one of the questions in there was on public projects, whether we were going to have the same permit requirement. So.
Yeah, if I may, kind of jump in here, a couple of things. I think what you were getting at was the city hires the contractors to do the work for a trail maintenance and things like that. How do we hold them? So that's a little, you know, we, we can require whatever in a bidding process of, we want more local hiring, more local jobs, we want this, and that. You know, there are other required things for jurisdictions to have, and those kind of call for, for things. And that can have its own list of what we want the right code of conduct for the contractors to be for public projects. I think that this focus and the issues we highlighted were for private developers coming in into the city to do private development. If you want one document that captures anyone that the city hires, I mean, we, we also have contractors, you know, so that's just a city policy that probably exists in a different location. I mean, more sustainable development. I mean, we can have multiple other things for, through the city's bidding project, process, that we can hold the contractors, you know, as our desired wish list of who we want to award the bid for. So it's slightly different process. But then there are other things, like Puget Sound Energy might come in, and, you know, there's a snowstorm, and they want to cut down the trees to, so there are certain exemptions for some type of government entity or private entity contractor. So there'll always be different flavors, but this was more geared towards if you have a permit from the city, what, what are you going to hold yourself accountable for? Not to say we can't expand the code of conduct to every type of, different types of contractors, but, so that's why we're here, to kind of understand. It was on the city's work plan, and we wanted to kind of make sure we understood what council was looking for.
Okay. I will save my comments on that for later. Okay. Do you have any other questions? Nope. Okay. Great. So then, at this time, I will call for public comments on this item. And I see we have one member of the community that would like to speak on this. And I also wanted to check in if there's anyone on the line at this time that might also want to give a public comment.
Chair Hunt, we do have a citizen on the line that would like to speak on this topic.
Okay, great. So first, we will have Connie. Go ahead.
Okay, Connie Marsh again. And like, like a code of conduct, it's gotten better with the checklist. It was absolute chaos before. But from the draft code of conduct, I sent you an email that pointed out some things that could improve it. So our biggest problems in the community now are public-private projects and public projects. And we have not found an effective way to make those better. It's actually harder to get a response on a public project than a private project. And often, the responses don't make anything better. So we, the, the community, especially like on Newport and some of these other projects, has really suffered for years trying to figure out how to fix it. And this is the first time that there's been a little loophole where we could see that maybe progress could be made. And I am, I am struck by the hesitation of one part of the city to try to get the other part of the city to behave in the community's best interest. It's very difficult to, to try to regulate your, your, the people that you work with. And I don't know how to solve that problem. And the only way I can think of it is to make it code, so it's not personal, it just is, and it always is. And that is just the way it is. And so something like a code of conduct for all public with some exemptions for emergencies, I think, is a priority, not something to do later. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk, could you please call the second person that wants to make a public comment?
Yes. Chair Hunt, Mary Lynch would like to speak to the committee. Ms. Lynch, I have made you a panelist. You should be able to unmute now and share your video.
Okay, this is Mary Lynch.
Yes, we can hear you.
Whoops. Okay. I'm muted now.
We can hear you.
Okay. It looked like it crossed me out. Okay. I have been asking for this for years with the city. My background was with construction management, and I started my career with Procter &amp; Gamble. And we, as construction managers, had to deal not only with the public, with our employees, with environment. And I learned and cut my teeth on dealing with the public and workers. And we had a code of conduct that anybody that came onto any of our sites, including employees, had to read the code of conduct, had to obey the code, conduct, and were walked out of property if they violated the code of conduct. And a lot of that had to do with dealing and working with and communicating with the public, the workers. We were having to continue our processes while we were doing construction. So we were very concerned about the public, about our workers, about the food and all that was still being manufactured when we were doing this. So I, my background is safety and communications and construction management. And the lack of it that I've seen here in, in Issaquah is appalling. And I live out on Newport Way, and I've seen, gone through since the early 90s, one construction project after the other, and having continually to call the city because they didn't communicate with us. Things are happening. They're blocking our roadways. And even with the current project out here on our street, the city totally set up this new project without reaching out to the community at all with anything. And we're having issues. And basically, the letter I gave back from the city, well, we've already resolved this. There are no issues with how we designed and working with it. Needless to say, we have cars that are blocking our crosswalk. We have cars that are blocking our entrance out. And we need to have a code of conduct with the public or contractors, and also with our public works projects that are happening, to make sure that we're reaching out to the community and talking with them, and the community has a way of communicating with whoever is responsible for that project, and doing it at the beginning and during and after the project. And that isn't happening. And I don't see with this code of conduct that it really has even the community involved at those levels, so that you can get an understanding of what's needed in, when you're doing projects. And I sent a letter and gave you some examples. And I would like to see on this code of conduct that there are some community meetings where you're sitting down with some of us who have to live with these things going on to get input to these. And fortunately, I heard about it today, but this is the first time I've seen it. And I would like to have some more time and also say we ought to be reaching out to the other communities that have lived with these projects and work on this code of conduct, so it, it meets the needs of the people. And it's, we can hold not only our private contractors accountable, but our public works contracts, because I also drive on Second. And what's happening over at Second and Bush right now is appalling. And the safety issues that are happening over there. And had the public been more involved with the planning of that and the code of conduct with those contractors over there, I don't think we would have the issues that we're seeing over there now on Bush and Second. And if people haven't visited it lately, well, you're lucky. And we're lucky we haven't had any serious accident. So the code of conduct should be for communications, not only with the city, but with the public, and safety should be emphasized, too. Thank you. I'd be glad to participate, and if I give them timely notice, to see if we can improve upon what's already exists and what's being presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Grabowski, do we have anyone else on the line?
No, Chair Hunt. That is everybody.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Then, at this time, we will move into council discussion on this item. And we do have a, we can potentially make a recommendation on this item if we would like to. Although it is to send, the, the recommended motion would be to recommend that we send it back to for another meeting, I believe. So, all right. Councilmember Ray, yes?
Thanks. Thanks for all the work you've done on this. I do believe this is something I started talking about in, in 2018. So it's very gratifying to see it, it coming to fruition. So I just want to go back to some of the reasons for it. Having lived in a construction site for way too many years, it kind of hits home. So this, this is an important thing. But anyway, contractors are short-term neighbors, and they should be good neighbors. And I think that's what we're trying to do, is to make sure that we make, make our contractors good neighbors while they're in our neighborhood. And the one thing that I will tell you, and I think we heard this from Mary Lynch, is people's tolerance for contractors wanes over time. So I may be really pretty happy and not too grumpy, but it's, it's like water torture. It wears you down. So I think best to get out in front of it and not let the, let that fester. So I think this is really good. I think, also, that I think city, city projects should be good neighbors, too. So I think, just like we talked about with, you know, the permitting process, we, we should, we should make sure that the same behavior is happening. It may go through a different channel, but it, the outcome should be the same. And then ultimately, one of the things that would really help is just information. I know we talked about information and how to tell people what the schedule is, and you know that drilling that they're doing, that's only going to go on for another 20 days. So you don't have to, to worry about it going on beyond 20 days. So you can manage your expectations. But good information about schedule, having people be thoughtful is very important. Minimize, minimizing traffic disruptions is really important. You know, I think I'm just going to stop talking about what's really important, because I think you know. And I have my thing, a list of things that I, I like, oh, that really frustrates me, and I wish that we had, like a board where I had a QR code, and I could shoot it, and then I could send an email, and I would be, get a speedy response. But I kind of agree with what I heard tonight, too, from the public, which is, it would be good if we could get some public input on what, what would have made a difference. What, down on Newport Way, what would have made a difference over the years that? on Newport Way, what would have made a difference over the years that that area was in a lot of, a lot of kind of back-to-back construction, and help us do this in such a way that it makes the biggest impact to the community. So, that, you know, I would rather take a few more months and get some input than feel like we have to get it done right now. That's, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. On that last sentence, do you think that until November would be, or, and I can also check in with James, but I'm wondering about, I mean, are you expecting that it would be longer than what's the administration's recommendation?
I'd be okay if it was longer. I guess that's what I'm saying. I mean, the sooner the better, but longer, better right than short.
Okay, got it. City Administrator?
Yes, Councilmember Ray, members of the committee, good evening. I guess some questions. So, would you like us to come back with a more form, a form document for the committee before we take it to the community? Do you want us to take it to the community, basically, in the form it's in now, and then from those discussions come back to you with a proposal?
Do I get to go? I'd like you to take it, because I think you've done a lot of good work. I mean, I like what I see. I mean, it's a good, it's a good start, I just don't know that it's complete and right and accurate, because I just have my experiences, and there's 40,000 other people in this town that might have other experiences. So, I would, you know, take that, it's a great start, you know, say, what have we missed, you know, and go from there.
So, then I, my sense is then we would need to have a general community meeting on this topic with sufficient notice. My guess is we probably could get that done before Thanksgiving, because I think once you hit Thanksgiving, that window closes very fast for community input. So, if we were to do that by the end of November, we could come back to you probably in January with the results of that, and maybe a more finalized document for the committee to respond to. Is that a reasonable timeframe?
This is just me, one of three, or one of seven. I'm fine with that. Like I said, I'd rather get the community input and take a little more time than to move it forward quicker.
So, I think that one of the two options that was listed here was basically take this to PPC. I assume, it doesn't mention, just says, develop a separate contractor code of conduct.
Yeah, I don't believe we had a proposed path for further input, so we could take it, I don't know if the PPC quite honestly is the right place.
Yeah.
I think that, you know, if you'd like, we can have a general community meeting and see what feedback we get from that. That's more, not hard to set up. We've not had one on a general topic in a long time, but this will give us some good opportunities. I'm sure we would need to do it hybrid, and so I think probably the room is less important, and probably just having the technology. My guess is a lot of folks will just, given the opportunity, just zoom in, not apt to worry about rooms and things. So, certainly would be, if not in this room, some public meeting room, but we would use a hybrid technology.
Okay, that sounds like a good way forward. And then, if we're developing a separate contractor code of conduct, is there any change to Title 18 to reference that, that would then, if we have at some point already adopted Title 18, would we have to go back and adjust?
You know, once we figure out what we want as part of this contractor code of conduct, if there's a, some more mechanism in the code for enforcement, we think we have that covered in Title 16, because it's really construction piece, and we'll come back to council with some changes to the building code anyways for sustainability and all that kind of stuff. So, we don't think that, you know, in January, if we go with a community outreach and then come back to you, if there is something that needs to change in the code because we need more teeth to enforce, we can certainly look at that, but at this point, it's more, we believe we have the enforcement tools, it's more about figuring out what do we want this code of conduct to look like.
And I think, as we've talked internally about this, the checklist as it exists is likely the vehicle for code of conduct enforcement. The code of conduct, you know, we are not going to want to post, you know, what might be multiple pages of what's really in the checklist, but what we would see, and I think what we've seen from other communities around the country, is the code is sort of an umbrella. And so, that may be something that's posted on a job site, it references other documents that people can look at, so I think that's likely the area that we would land, because I think we have found that the checklist is a good thing, and it is effective. We need to build a bridge with the community so that they're aware of it, that they realize that there are paths if they observe a project not following that real or perceived. I mean, I think that's going to be, the other challenge is perception versus reality, it's the problem we face now. And so, if this at least allows folks who aren't as plugged into our processes to, again, have a QR code, have something, and then we can at least satisfy a curiosity or deal with a real problem much quicker, because as we all know, perception becomes reality, and if there's a perception people aren't following, then regardless of what the reality is, that's what people think. So, we can put together a meeting before the end of November, come back in January, and I think that would be a good way forward.
Yeah, I think that sounds good. Okay, well, if that is agreeable to this committee and the administration, I think we can go forward with that. Do we have any other comments? I think we had one, one comment to the effect of the current, the current analysis that was done, the list of items, although not in a code format, that that's, that's a good starting point for this community conversation, right? Do we have anything that we would want to suggest adding, or that we don't think needs to be in there, or change, Council President?
I have a bunch of notes. Basically, I love that we're finally doing this. To me, it brings up a lot of questions about what is the appropriate communication method for the community, and particularly, what belongs on the notification board, and what belongs on the website, as a way to convey the information about the project, about what the neighbors can expect from the project as far as timeline, and allowed work hours, and expected noise and traffic, and all of those things, as well as 24/7 emergency contact information. I love the idea of a QR code on that. I would love there to be some kind of public notification, whether it's on the website or on that notification board, of any violations that were found, and what the consequences were. I think it's much easier as a community member, if I see that, you know, there's been a violation, I'm more likely to call in the next time I see something. So, I think that's important. I think as far as what needs to be included, whether it's in the checklist or the code of conduct, is something about the school district and metro bus stops. I think it's really important that there's notification to those organizations early, particularly so that they can move a bus stop, rather than try and get it to happen in front of a construction site. And I know we don't control those things, but we should at least require that they make contact. And then, I do agree that public projects should have to be a good neighbor as well. So, I would love to hear from our new public works director and just get her involved in this process as far as what, how do we make this applicable for our public works department and for our subcontractors that are coming on site to handle a project for us? So, I think that would be another piece of information as far as how to get feedback. Thanks.
Okay, great. So, I think that all sounds like a good way forward, and one thing I think that also would be helpful to get expert information on is, or expert perspective on, is about how applicable this would be if we do expand it to, you know, things like road projects and trails, because I was thinking, when you mentioned that, you know, a trail, and a trail that's far from where people are living, it probably isn't as much of an issue about notifying about noise and these other things. So, there's probably pieces that are, and that was just, when you said that, I thought of that, but I'm sure there are lots of other sort of nuances, because this, as it's written, I think, really was meant to apply to buildings and contractors doing that particular form of construction. So, I think expanding where it makes sense, I would be okay with, but I think it probably doesn't, yeah, it's probably not a one-size-fits-all. And then, I think the list is good, I think the main questions really are around the communication to the community, the neighbors. Interesting point about bus stops, but you know, other, other important neighboring facilities, that all of that communication is probably important. I think one other thing we could do, it would probably be done through this process anyway, but get a, get a sense of the community's preferences with see, click, fix, and if that's working, if they feel that that's responsive, and I know we recently had a report as one of our consent items, just sort of describing how see, click, fix is going, but this might be an opportunity to kind of, say, get more into if people are using it or not, or what they would prefer to use. So, yeah, I think that all sounds like a great way forward for me as well. One other thing which was mentioned in, mentioned by James is, I think noxious weeds could be added because they do overrun sites, and so that we get to make sure that people know they're expected to keep those under control as part of the code of conduct. But otherwise, I thought all the components were there, and then maybe it's just fine-tuning with community input, and input from our public works and staff. Council President?
Yeah, I was just looking back at the goals and outcomes chart, and this relates to number five, improve public awareness of development and construction activities. And I have to say honestly, when we created that goals and outcomes chart, I really thought that applied much more to redesigning and kind of rethinking what's on that notification board and what's on a website. So, I just want to make sure that is included in this, that we're not just developing the contractor code of conduct, because the public awareness part of that goals and outcome is really super important, so.
And I think it's important to recognize, we could not find one city west of the Mississippi that had a contractor code of conduct, because they are all handling it the way you just described, that it's not a contractor code of conduct, it's what's a central place to have information about projects for people to communicate. That doesn't make a contractor code of conduct bad, it's just that, you know, I think our sense is that other communities use the checklist, they use proper signage, they use, you know, technology to do that. I think it'll be great for us to put an umbrella on top of it, but do all the things you just said. It's not just a matter of plopping up a sign that says, here's the contractor code of conduct, we're done. It's about integrating these other tools, and if we want to publicize it by saying we have this contractor code of conduct, but here's all the other mechanisms that fall underneath it, that's where the real success is. It's not having a contractor code of conduct, because again, we could not find one city west of the Mississippi that had one. We saw lots about contractor checklists, we saw lots about signage, we saw lots about notification, but we didn't see anything about a contractor code of conduct.
Great. So, then, just to be clear, when we are going to have a public meeting on this, I would hope that a notification board and what information the community wants to see on that, and what they want to see on a website, would be part of that, and then also whether notification boards and/or website pages are appropriate and expected for public projects, and what those types of public projects are. As Councilmember Hunt mentioned, maybe a trail that's in the middle of a trail system doesn't apply, but maybe a trailhead that comes to a roadway near houses does. And so, getting community feedback on what those things are, I think, would be helpful in order to kind of figure out how we apply this to some of those projects.
Okay, do we have any additional feedback or thoughts on this?
No.
Okay. Does the administration have what you need from our committee in terms of this? And then, my last question is, should we take action, or is it adequate? I can report back to council on our discussion and that we've made this recommendation.
The item remains in committee.
Yeah, okay, so that, and that doesn't require an action? Okay, all right, so if there is no further conversation on this one, or thoughts, celebration? Great, very good. Then, are there any announcements any committee members have? No, okay, then, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 8:37. Thank you.